I'll call this meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Kildee?
Here.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Here.
Councilmember Trembley? Vice Mayor Moshe?
Present.
Mayor Craven?
Here. Okay, this part of the council meeting is for a closed session, so I will ask the city attorney to give us the reasons that we're allowed to go into closed session.
Yes, it's a conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956 point nine D four, number of potential cases is one.
And we will reconvene here at five o'clock.
Well, we got audio on the live stream, but we didn't get audio on the broadcast, and she never switched off of your slide for either.
What?
Just stayed on the slide the whole time.
Well-
Was there some mic not on? I mean, I heard it on the phone, but I didn't hear it on the TV. Well, now's the time to test it.
Want me to check her mic?
Yeah. I think it works. I think we just gotta make sure the TV works.
Testing one-two, testing one-two.
None of the mics were on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I turned them all off.
What about low?
It's right here?
Oh.
Hold on one second.
No, don't worry about that. That's something that Mark did. Yeah, I know, but we-
I wanna have.
Well, I guess the question is, is, I mean, 'cause that's a lower third, but if we don't have sound, that's a bigger issue than the lower third.
I don't care about everything, because just I have to be, I don't care, but I just wanted to know who was there. You were out there, so-
Yeah, I told you that one hit it.
Since he was here.
Okay, okay.
But this is a bigger issue, the audio.
Yeah, so-
We got the camera tap audio on here.
When you were here, you heard, you saw.
Well, their microphones, the guys were off.
I think they had the microphones on.
Oh, really?
Well, but I heard it on the phone. You heard it on the phone? Yeah.
Well, I think we were barely picking it up maybe from anywhere.
What do you mean on the phone? I mean, on my, uh- That's live, that's live, yeah, but that's a live stream, we're talking broadcast. Yeah, yeah. Well, don't, turn on, well, I mean, what we need to do is actually turn on the television and listen.
It's on.
Okay, so listen to it here. Go into the CCR.
Okay. A fisher gagging at this little fucker.
Yeah.
Test one-two, test one-two.
So you think it's because they didn't have those-
I didn't, they didn't hear anything on the TV right now. Do you have the levels turned up like normal?
What do you mean, some volume?
Yeah, the volume levels.
This?
Turned up, yeah. Well, let it get back there.
Okay.
Give me a, give me a little bit.
Okay.
So they had the audio off or whatever?
I don't know.
Everybody's so intense.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be okay.
Testing one-two, testing one-two, testing one-two-three-four.
What was indicating to you that it wasn't working?
Well, I kept turning up the volume. I didn't hear anything.
Oh, I'm here?
No, here.
And you weren't hearing it on the headphones?
No.
Testing one-two, testing one-two, testing one-two-three-four.
It's the YouTube delay.
That was on YouTube, that was just me.
That, that's a delay, that's why we're just now getting it.
Well, if you're hearing it through your headset, you should be hearing it, right?
Yes, no, I'm hearing it.
And you heard it?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're gonna keep it going. Yeah, maybe I should turn it up higher.
Well, but now what we need to do is there's people talking out there with mics on, so we need to turn it down.
Oh.
And then that volume will turn it back up.
Yeah, we're looking at it.
You're all talking out here just fine.
Yeah.
And, uh, you are, uh-
Is that my laugh just going through there? Oh, so the mic's still up.
Did you hear it on your phone?
I'm still hearing everything on YouTube right now.
Oh, so we have to turn the volume back down.
My volume's down.
Something's-
My volume's down.
We hear the volume-
The audio's going into YouTube still.
Oh, I just heard you. Oh, 'cause the mics are on.
Testing one-two-three.
Now it's still playing?
Yeah.
One thing.
Why aren't the things here?
They not doing anything, but this red light, it goes on and off, sometimes it's not even in your level, but okay, so I don't know if there's meaning in anything, but this light, it never did that before. It only does that when it's like too high or something.
Maybe the live stream doesn't, maybe it gets the audio before that thing clicks?
Yeah. They want the audio from the movie. It should be getting it from here. It should be getting it from here. Maybe it's not.
It did have audio the whole time. It did have audio on that.
So phone is still turned up. So we need to turn off the microphones.
Yeah.
We need to turn all the microphones back on again, I think. Well, there's two microphones.
I'm gonna lock it down and ask the clerk to, ask him to turn it back on one.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, you're still-
Where is it picking it up?
Is there a room mic?
Is it, is it that camera?
No.
No.
That's not feeding it anything. There's gotta be- There's gotta be some other microphone in the rooms. Is the, is the lecture mic off?
It seemed like it picked it up strong here.
Yeah, these are all off, but, uh, when I walked by this area, it was louder. When I walked by this area, it was louder. So I'm wondering if they hung like room microphones when they did the changes here?
Camera microphone? Yeah, I don't know. Well, we went from having no sound to having nothing but sound.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that happened.
Well, YouTube always had sound. We never didn't have sound on YouTube. I mean, it's still getting, even here.
Go outside and see what happens.
Well, it certainly won't get me outside.
I don't know.
It's like the phone. Picking it up on the phone.
Do you want any laptops that has the audio on it?
No, because it's not, not plugged in.
The white light's off.
Testing one-two.
Ground fault.
So that's-
It's, something's not well grounded and it's still picking some up even though I've got-
That should be better now. Is it picking up the operator room?
No.
Microphone is picking up everything.
Yeah, this microphone's on, whether it's on or off. It has high and low, but not off.
Testing one-two.
Yeah.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Camarillo Library Board. Let the record reflect that all trustees are present. Mr. Mulchay, will you lead us in the flag salute?
With pleasure. Everyone, please rise. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
Any public comments? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Mr. Mulchay?
What? Mr. Tremblay moved it. I seconded.
Oh, I didn't hear. Wow. Thank you. Okay. Oh, we have to vote. I was going to ask for a roll call. And that passes? By five to nothing. Okay. We'll move on to any update on library activities. I'm sorry. Do we have a report?
Yes, Your Honor, and members of the Library Board. We do have with us tonight Patricia Crosby, our interim director of the library. And she's here to give some brief comments on how our reopening went yesterday. And I would also like to notice that she -- that this is her last time -- her last meeting with us will be tonight, as our next Library Board meeting will have our new library director. So here's Patricia.
Appreciate being here. Thanks. That's better. Good evening. I can shout through the mask, but this is better. So obviously, if anybody didn't know, we opened the library yesterday. So first reopening day in over a year. It was really good to be open. I just wanted to share a couple of comments, give you a little brief update on the Friends, who also did a very soft reopening on their bookstore as well. So we did have a lineup outside the library at about 9:30, half an hour before we opened, which was really nice to see anxious people and excited to be walking through those doors again. As people were walking through the doors, I heard many comments as we're welcoming them back saying, "Thank you so much for everything. We really appreciate this. We appreciated your curbside service, but it is so good to be back in the Camarillo Library." So it was kind of a stampede, and we just got out of their way and said, "Thank you. It's great to see you and welcome back." So I wanted to definitely say thank you to all the city staff that helped make this happen, including facilities and IT. That's been really useful and helpful and been with us, obviously, you know, working together all the way through. So thanks for making that happen. Obviously, the Plexiglas is all up. The signs are on the floor. We've got hand sanitizer stations throughout the building. We also have disposable masks at each service desk in case anybody needs those who walks in the door. And staff are disinfecting throughout the hour and at the beginning of all the position changes and shifts. So that is all going on. Obviously, curbside is still going on as well. Tuesdays normally would have been normally, in the, you know, abnormal time, would have been our busiest days. Yesterday, it was 47 pickups. So we would normally average anywhere between 100 and 70 to 200 on a Tuesday, so yesterday was 47. Having said that, our door count for yesterday was 536. So that was great news. That's really good news. Love the new self-checkout machines. Really appreciate the updated computer software. Patrons were very pleased to see those new computer monitors and the printing stations as well. And we also have roamers that are walking throughout the building, just as an FYI. So they're checking in on each other, on the staff, monitoring the vibe of the building, and just answering patron questions. So we're going to keep doing that for a little while, maybe somewhat far into the future as well. The children's room was keeping track of the people who were walking through their doors and past their desks. 300 people stopped at their desk. So that was awesome. And we have no new fiction books on the shelf. Everything was checked out. So we have book bundles of books that are not completely new, but are new-ish, and those are all throughout the building at all different levels, and nonfiction, children, YA, fiction. So those are very popular as well. The Friends also, again, had a soft reopening, so they're open on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. They had just advertised about that to their email members on Monday night because they wanted it to be a very soft reopening. They also had people lined up outside their door before they opened. They heard comments from people that, "Oh, we saw the library was open, so we're coming into the Friends store." The foot track was -- the foot traffic was steady all day. They said that they made $400 before noon. Their total for the day was just over $930, and it said that normal Tuesdays, they would usually bring in 600. So it was a nice little blast. Really good to see that. The one comment, too, that one of the Friends members said was, "Everyone was on their best behavior when they came in. Everybody was being respectful. The masks were all on. We also saw that in the library." And then the final comment from one of the Friends volunteers was, "All in all, we went home tired, but happy." So that was really good. Final thing I wanted to say, as John mentioned, obviously, we have a new director coming on board on May 10th, and her name is Mandy Nasser. And I just wanted to say, it has been a pleasure working in Camarillo and with and for you. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, for especially during this crazy year. Was filling in as interim, but also just trying to help navigate this unprecedented time. So thank you. Do you have any other comments from -- go ahead, Mr. Kildie.
Is the -- I don't know if they call it a coffee house or whatever, but is that opened as well? I know we had talked about that a little bit, but is there any update on that?
Yeah, so we are in communication with the cafe operator. And at this time, there is commitments that she's made to her current -- where she's working currently until mid-May. And then, so she's going to take some time and then also assess the foot traffic, because so much of that business is really just based on the foot traffic in that area between the Friends and the library. And then from that, she'll be able to assess kind of the -- how much produce and materials to buy for her operation. And so we're looking at likely probably end of June or in July that that would come online.
But they're still interested in?
Yes, the operator's still interested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more comments from trustees? Okay. With that, we'll adjourn.
All right. We'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District to order. By the way, I was looking for my microphone, and I thought I was going to hit the mute button. So it's really interesting trying to be back. No need for roll call. Record will reflect that all directors are here. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
Any public comments? Seeing none. Do you have a motion on the consent calendar?
Move the approval.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Please vote. And I'm having trouble seeing Susan's, but I believe it's adopted 5-0, right? Okay. Thank you. That motion is adopted 5-0. I'm sorry, Susan, I can't see over to where that -- I'm obviously out of practice. Okay. Comments from staff? No comments from staff? Comments from board members?
I have one, if you might.
Mr. Kildie.
Yeah, just kind of quickly, and I'll say it on the CAMSAN agenda, but I had the pleasure of doing a tour of Agroman this week. And I was really interested in so many varieties of soil amendments that they do, among other things that they're doing, working on some real, I would call them, you know, futuristic ideas. But anyhow, recycling is alive and well, and I learned a lot. So I just wanted to make a comment on that, if you would. Sure.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from any other directors? All right. We're going to recess this meeting of the Sanitary District to later coincide with the meeting of the City Council.
And I will call the meeting of the Camarillo Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency to order. Ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
Public comments? Would anyone like to address the successor agency? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move to the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Some motion by Mr. Tremblay, second by Mr. Kildie to approve the consent calendar. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Comments from staff? Not seeing anyone jump up. Comments from board members? Not hearing anyone. We will now recess to the capital improvement program. And at this point, where did it go? There it is. Considering that we just approved item B on the consent cali -- oh, no, we haven't gotten there yet. I'm on the wrong agenda, and I truly apologize. I'll now call the meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order again and ask that the record reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
Okay. That gets us to the consent calendar.
Like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Oh, sure.
I guess that's item P.
I'm sorry, I couldn't --
Item P.
P as in Paul?
Paul.
Under this new system, we'll take that up immediately after the consent calendar. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion on the consent calendar with the exception of item P as in Paul?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item P. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. And before we get to item P, considering that we just approved item B, I want to read a letter of good news. Dear Mr. Ramirez, and this is from the Ventura County Agriculture Commissioner. The hemp regulations adopted 14 January 2021 by the Ventura County Board of Supervisors imposed restrictions on hemp activities near certain defined sensitive sites, including residential zones within cities. Following the action taken by the City Council to rename the rural exclusive zone to the rural exclusive residential zone, the agricultural commissioner now considers this new zone to be a sensitive site as defined by the Ventura County Hemp Regulations. All hemp-related restrictions in the hemp regulations now apply to activities near the new rural exclusive residential zone in the city of Camarillo. Good news. Thank you for getting that letter off so quickly. Okay. Now we'll take up item P as in Paul. Did you want a staff report or just a question or?
No, I don't -- I don't need a staff report, but I guess it's comment questions kind of morphed into one. And this is not about personal abilities at all. I just want to start with that. But, you know, I think we all realize that there are some really important things coming up with the airport, with the master plan, and with some issues that are on our radar. Nice pun. And I think it's going to be really, really important that our -- that we, as a council, have a unified and clear position across the board. And I'm feeling that this arrangement is just a little disjointed. We have the mayor on the master plan committee. We have the mayor and the vice mayor on the ad hoc committee. And then we have the vice mayor and me on the airport authority. And I feel like because of -- I know that in the staff report that the city attorney has said that he doesn't think that there's a Brown Act issue, but I'm envisioning, what if there is an issue that's going to come to the airport authority that has been discussed in the other meetings or at the ad hoc committee, and I can't be privy to that? So I'm wondering how that works, and is that a potential Brown Act violation? If somebody -- if the mayor or the vice mayor wanted to share with me things that were discussed at those other meetings, that might influence how I vote at the authority? So, yeah.
Well, they've actually got a different mic for me, but if you're all hearing me, that's good enough. So.
Just close one up.
I've never been accused of not being able to project, so. So the answer is, you can fully participate in the matters that come before the airport commission, including considering input that has been received from the county planning agency committee the mayor is on and from the ad hoc committee. So there would not be a Brown Act issue because the airport commission is a Brown Act body. So you would be able to participate fully at the airport commission, airport authority proceedings.
Okay. Okay. It just -- it still seems -- still seems odd. It seems disjointed to me. It seems that I'm still not going to be privy to what's happening on the other two, and so my ability to represent the city at the airport authority, it just -- it doesn't feel like it is the best that it could be. So I wanted to share that and get some feedback.
Yeah, a question for our city attorney. So can I discuss with councilmember San Angelo items related to the airport as it pertains to discussions on the master plan?
My advice would be that those discussions take place at the airport authority, because if -- here's the situation. You don't want to have three councilmembers.
All right, I'm sorry. I can hardly hear you. I can't hear anything you're saying.
I don't know how much closer I can get to this mic.
Yeah.
Is there some -- pump up the volume on this? Or not?
Yeah.
We have to do better than this. Okay. So the answer is, the reason why there's -- you've got two councilmembers proposed for the ad hoc committee, which are Mayor Craven and councilmember Mulchay, and then Mayor Craven on the mayor's committee. So that's two. And it's not three. So that would not create a Brown Act issue. However, if there were offline conversations with councilmember San Angelo outside of the meeting of the airport authority, that would then engage three members in the discussion, which I believe creates a risk of a Brown Act problem. So that's why I gave the answer I did earlier, which is that councilmember San Angelo can fully participate in the proceedings before the airport authority, but she should not be having conversations offline with either councilmember Mulchay or with Mayor Craven.
And therein lies the rub. That makes me feel like I'm handicapped going into the airport authority and not able to best represent our city in matters that come up at the authority if I'm not allowed to have those conversations.
Could I make a comment if I may? However, my understanding, that would only be on an item that the ad hoc committee has discussion. It would also not be an item that could potentially be on the board agenda. Those two members could -- or another member could still have a conversation with each other on an item that is not on the ad hoc agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Perry?
Well, my answer to that is the ad hoc committee is entitled, the Camarillo Airport Ad hoc Committee, and the airport authority is entitled to air And the airport authority is entitled the airport authority. So I don't think that we would be able to and shouldn't try to differentiate between, on an issue by issue basis. I think that the subject matter is the airport. So in order to limit the offline discussions of the airport issues to two, that's why I'm saying that council member Santangelo can participate at the airport commission. She can hear at that meeting, review reports, ask questions, receive input from the public and fully participate at the meeting with whatever information she receives from whatever source, including from the ad hoc committee and the mayor's committee, just as any other member of the airport commission would receive. But we shouldn't have three Camarillo council members having discussions outside of a public meeting regarding the airport issues.
Mayor, mayor, if I may. To somewhat address this issue, staffs worked fairly diligently because of the complications created by the airport director, airport authority director, creating this mayor's committee that consists of four different cities' mayors in Ventura County, something he did not consult any of the cities on. But I, I do believe, and Mr. Perry can correct me if I'm wrong, that, and we plan to bring the items discussed at the ad hoc committee to the full council so that at an agendized meeting, that you can discuss that item so that council member Santangelo isn't handicapped at the airport authority. And that, that, we've discussed those ways of kind of dealing with this challenge that we face, the complications that we face. But the issue is so enormous and so important. We're just trying to find ways to navigate it. Excuse the pun.
So the, the answer to that was the question is, is yes. That can happen. You can have a full discussion at a council meeting because it's a noticed meeting open to the public. And the ad hoc committee can report to the entire council, including council member Santangelo, on their review of the airport issues. That's what ad hoc committees do, is come back to the council to update them on, on their work. And that can be done. And, and council member Santangelo can fully participate at that meeting as well.
And let me just interject here. I got involved because I was invited to be on this committee. The other mayors are on it. I thought very strongly that if the mayors of Thousand Oaks, Oxnard, Ventura and other cities that are interested in having a, an airport with passenger service are there and the mayor of Camarillo is not there, it would send a message that Camarillo is not very interested in this. That, that's, that was my thought.
Well, two of the cities that are on, don't, aren't part of the airport authority. So their mayors can participate. As I was saying, as those, those mayors could participate without the issue that I think we're facing. You know, at the airport authority meeting, when, when the director, when Kip Turner spoke to us about the master plan committee, he said he was going to be reaching out to the mayors, but that any elected official, just to clarify, and I did speak to Kip a few days ago to ask exactly how it was presented. So I, like I said, I, it's, it's not a personal thing. I still feel like I'm, it just doesn't feel right. When we had the ad hoc committee for the Camarillo Ranch Foundation, it was the two people who sat on that board. So, I mean, I'd be happy to, to give up my seat on the airport authority. And, and Mayor Craven, you could take that over and then there wouldn't be this issue.
Well, we can't do that tonight because it's not on the agenda. We can look at it. Um, without all, is there any other comments? Okay, what are we going to do with item P? From the consent calendar?
We'll have to wait now.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item P from the consent calendar. I can go back and read the title. It's right there. Formation of a Camarillo Airport Ad hoc Committee. Is your objection?
I'll second it.
I need the motion and the second, please vote. Motion carries four one with council member Santangelo dissenting. Uh, next, our discussion item, the first one is capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021 to 2023.
I will open this meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District Board of Directors.
And I will reopen the meeting of the Camarillo Succession Agency.
Great, thank you, Mayor Craven, city council directors and other titles. The draft five-year capital improvement program being presented tonight is a result of a very large collaborative effort starting at the beginning of the year and involving many staff from all departments. We have a very substantial CIP with an average budget of around $30 million for each of the five years. I'd like to acknowledge the extensive efforts by public works and finance staff and the many hours that have gone into preparing this year's update to the CIP. That's going to be presented for you tonight. Principal Engineer Ken Matsooka will be giving the presentation, allowing time for questions as we go and also at the end.
All right. We have our fiscal year '21, '26 capital improvement program presentation tonight. This year, our CIP plan includes 63 projects totaling $148 million over years one through five. This includes 13 new projects. And the CIP has 95 total projects, including closeout and future projects. We have 35 current projects actively being worked on. I want to go over the steps of how the five-year capital improvement program is developed and adopted. Starting where we are today in the process, staff is seeking input on the draft five-year CIP to prepare a document for adoption by council in June. Work continues on existing projects. And after CIP adoption, staff will begin work on year one projects in the coming year as availability allows. Work will begin on the next five-year CIP document, starting in January 2022. When staff starts working on the new CIP document in January, we start updating existing project information and estimates, as well as consider new projects and review project priority. In general, projects in the earlier years of the CIP are those that are of a higher priority. CIP projects are prioritized with consideration given to health and safety, asset preservation, regulatory requirements and new or expanded services, while also considering availability for funding and staff workload capacity. In practical terms, that means that each project has specific requirements for when the work needs to take place. And this is weighed against funding availability, regulatory requirements and staff capacity to try to schedule the projects to be constructed in the most beneficial way for the city. Project priority is also developed in coordination with various departments and the city manager's office. I wanted to review the lifecycle of an example CIP project, including times when cost estimates are updated and also review the various times when a project will be taken to city council, as well as the general work involved in each phase of the project. We've all seen how a CIP project moves forward in the process. However, I don't think we've put it all in one place in the past. Projects come in all shapes and sizes and complexities. Since it's difficult to say what a typical project is, we'll describe an example project's lifecycle. Starting with the initiation of a project that's been included in the CIP, we'll go to council for authorization to issue an RFQ for design services. This process of authorization, advertising, selecting, negotiating the proposal and awarding a contract for design takes about six months. On some projects, we'll do a concept design before final design. So for example here, let's say we will award a contract for concept design. The process will take about a year or two. And basically, we'll be looking at alternatives. And we'll have rough cost estimates created. The consultant's cost estimate will be a refinement of the cost estimate in the CIP prepared by staff. At the end of the concept design process, we'll typically bring the project to council for input. We'll then have a better idea of the scope for our project. So we'll bring a contract for final design services to council for award. The final design process will take about one to three years, depending on complexity, and will result in a final set of plans and specifications and a detailed cost estimate. At that point, staff will return to council to request an authorization for bidding. The bidding process takes about three to six months. And if all goes well with the bids for most CIP projects, a construction contract is awarded at council. Smaller project within the city manager's authority may be awarded by the city manager. The construction process takes about one to two years for most projects. Various consultants are retained to help us with the construction process. Construction is the phase that the public sees the most. After construction is complete, we return to council for project acceptance and authorization to file the notice of completion and make final payment after about a month after that filing. And after construction is complete, the project isn't complete. There's still a lot of work to close out the project. And after the warranty period is complete, we return to council to exonerate bonds. Now, unique to Camarillo and other smaller cities or agencies is that we typically manage these projects cradle to grave, meaning that we typically have a project manager that takes a project all the way through the process because our public works CIP group isn't large enough to have specialists to hand off projects when they get to certain stages. This means that it is the most efficient for city staff to hire consultants to design and manage portions of the work, while city staff retains control and direction of the overall project to ensure it meets Camarillo requirements, best practices, and so staff can manage the project through the various stages of input provided on the project. I'll pause here for a moment if anyone has questions. Okay. We have 13 new projects in the CIP this year. The first two are pavement projects, the annual resurfacing and the annual overlay project. These two projects are continuations of the pavement projects that we have each year. The next project is our annual SSMP, which is the next year in a series of annual sewer pipeline projects. Pump station number four rehabilitation was added to the CIP by the Camarillo Sanitary District after adoption of the CIP in September. So it's shown here as new to the book, but the council or the board has already seen this. The storm drain infrastructure repair project was added to the CIP by council at mid-year. So it's also shown here as new to the book. Now, the rest of these projects are new. And we'll go over each of them one by one in the upcoming slides. The recycled water pump station improvements project. The project was previously included in the CIP as an electrical and control system project. However, as we perform design for the recycled water reservoir project, due to conflicts in the design, the pump station will need to be relocated to be adjacent to the reservoir. The project budget is 3.1 million and currently in design. Construction is anticipated to be in fiscal year '21, '22 and will be coordinated with the reservoir project. The hardscape and sidewalk renovation project was added to the CIP as there's a need to address hardscape replacement in various locations in the city. We've identified a rough order of magnitude estimate of $600,000. Design is anticipated to begin in fiscal year '24, '25 and construction in '25, '26. Staff will be compiling an inventory of locations as a part of the project and as part of design and update estimates at that time. For the street tree replacement project, we've identified an order of magnitude estimate of $550,000 for replacement of street trees in various locations in the city, including Ponderosa Drive. Some of the existing trees have outgrown their current location and are causing damage. Staff will be compiling an inventory of trees to be replaced by prioritizing those locations that are most need. And this information and types of trees proposed will be presented to council at a future date when the project is in design. The project will be in fiscal year '24, '25 for design and fiscal year '25, '26 for construction. The storm drain rehabilitation project will repair damaged storm drain piping and structures in various locations, including city hall parking lot and piping that crosses Los Postes Road west of Arneal. The project budget is $450,000 and is scheduled for fiscal year '21, '22 for design and '22, '23 for construction. The city hall concrete walkway project replaces the pedestrian walkways on the north side of city hall to make them ADA compliant. The project budget is $190,000 and design is planned for fiscal year '21, '22 and construction is anticipated in fiscal year '22, '23. I'm going to pause here and see if there's any questions on these before we get into some wastewater projects.
Is it safe to assume that the hardscape sidewalk renovation and the street tree replacement are pretty much intertwined? In that we're probably going to be having to remove trees that are causing damage? And then the street, the hardscape and sidewalk renovation will be repairing sidewalks and gutters that are damaged as a result of a root intrusion?
They're similar, but one is more focused on concrete work and may not involve tree removals. The other one is, is focused more on tree removal and damage from trees. But that's a little bit of more of a side note for, for the concrete. The other one's more focused on concrete. So they're, they're similar and they might involve, both might involve concrete.
Are the estimates in these two respective items, do we anticipate those to increase significantly? Or how did we come to those? Do we have a, a pretty rough idea as to the, the locations and the number of trees?
We have not done any sort of inventory or that sort of thing yet. These are just ballpark numbers that we've put in here as placeholder numbers.
Okay. My only, my, my question is because my concern is that once we really start to look at the trees and hardscape damage, that that number, both those numbers are probably going to increase significantly.
Yes, and at that point, we would be, after we study it, we will come back to council to report our findings.
Okay, thanks.
So sort of an aside, but in the picture for the, the hardscape renovation that we saw that curb sticking up, that, in the meantime, do we do things to mediate the risk that that poses?
Yes, and one of the main reasons we're adding these two projects in is to supplement what we currently do on an ongoing basis with a limited amount of resources and budget, which are high priority areas or what we address on a regular ongoing basis. Even prioritizing areas where we can grind the sidewalk more cost effective rather than replace. But what we see is the amount of locations that need to be addressed, especially in the future, are large enough that we're going to have to have a focused CIP project of a larger magnitude. And of course, what council member Milche was pointing at, not determined yet how large that magnitude is. We've got a starting point here and it's really going to come down to the prioritization. But yes, both on sidewalk, hardscape replacement and tree replacement as needed, we address that on an ongoing basis.
Thanks. Sean?
Sorry. On the drainage piping project, is it two or three from, from this one? Would that include repiping? Can we just lay a pipe inside? Or is that, do you anticipate that that's going to include us having to bore it out and lay new pipe?
We will have to look at it. But that, that is an option to look at.
I just figure one is significantly more expensive than the other. So I didn't know if we had already come to a conclusion as to—
There's limitations to each of the, each of, there's pros and cons and we'll have to investigate which is the most cost effective.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions so far? Okay. I, I had one because we get so many complaints about the trees, especially the trees that are overgrowing their, the tree well. are overgrowing their, the tree well and popping the sidewalks up. In dry years, it's worse because the trees are looking for water especially, and this year was really bad. Is there any chance this project can be moved up sooner?
We will have to look at that. Dave had some thoughts on that, I think so.
Yeah, that is a consideration, you know, as we put the CIP together with adding new projects, it always becomes a pretty significant exercise on prioritization and, you know, the ability to work on and move forward a certain amount of projects. So, we could look at rescheduling and possibly moving it ahead. Something else we'll probably have to give in the schedule of CIP projects. So, with, I think as Ken mentioned, thirty-some projects already in the works, it would be difficult to move this into next year, but we could look at, you know, looking at rescheduling things if we can now or in next year's update to the CIP, have a better idea of the possibility of moving it up. So, there always is that possibility, but again, it's going to have a ripple effect on other things too.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're finished with this part.
All right, we'll move on to the next section. So wastewater projects here. This is a planned generator replacement based on the expected useful life of the existing generators at the wastewater treatment plant and various pump stations. The previously discussed at other council meetings prior, the microgrid solar and battery project, that does not include the scope of replacing these existing generators at the wastewater treatment plant. The generators are doing well for their age, but as a treatment plant, it's an important facility, it's time to consider replacing this equipment. We don't anticipate having to replace the generators at all the pump stations throughout the city, as some generators are newer, but our initial estimate is a project budget of $4.1 million, which will be refined when the exact scope is determined through the design process. We'll look into grant funding for the project as well, and we anticipate design beginning in fiscal year '21, '22 and construction in '24, '25 to '25, '26.
I have a question, Your Honor, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Kilday.
Ken, is there, I'm not asking you to forecast, but is there a market for a used generator that still has some life left in it?
We will have to see, or if we need, we need, if we might want to keep one or something like that too. We'll have to look and see what we would do with it. We have not investigated at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Sean.
Ken, when we approved and, or discussed and approved the Tesla battery backup system out there at the wastewater treatment plant, we, someone had said that we anticipated that generator lasting maybe only two more years on its useful life. So is there any concern amongst staff that in delaying it, delaying construction at '24, sometime between '24 and '26 puts us into a worrisome zone, that it might fail on us in the event we need to rely on it? Because I know the battery backup is only going to last us approximately eleven hours.
Yeah, we've had someone look at this previously, and our treatment plant staff has also looked at it, and all indications are that the generator is doing okay. However, just because of its age, it's going to be time to replace it, so there's not really concerns at this point, it's just because of age.
Okay, so no concern or anything that would indicate imminent failure, just, it's just reaching the end of its useful life?
Yeah, it's just time.
All right, thanks.
Tony.
Ken, what's the, what's the useful life of the generator at the wastewater treatment plant?
Well, we've heard a number of estimates, but the generators currently are approximately thirty years old. We've heard forty is a number from, from some people, but they could last longer, but it's just a matter of, since this is such an important facility for the city, we do not want to wait that long to be replacing these.
And what year was it installed?
I didn't hear you.
What year was it installed? How old is it specifically?
I can't remember the exact year, but it was, all I recall is thirty years, so that's about 1990, plus or minus a couple of years, so eighty-something, eighty-seven possibly is one of them, and another one was probably a little newer than that, 1990-something.
Okay.
Ballpark of thirty years.
Ballpark of thirty, okay, thank you.
Okay.
The wastewater treatment plant upgrades Phase One is a project to perform essential upgrades that need to be done in the near term to sustain the plant and remain in compliance, while we perform studies and concept design on the more substantial work required in Phase Two. The wastewater master plan, which will be presented to CSD later this year, we'll have more details about this project, but based on the studies completed so far, those projects that were prioritized as needing to be replaced within the next five years have been put into Phase One. Now, things aren't falling apart in the plant right now, and this is avoided by anticipating this work that's needed and planning and budgeting for it through master planning efforts and inserting it into this five-year CIP so it can be included in upcoming rate studies. The final design is shown to begin in fiscal year '22, '23 after completion of the master plan, as that document will have sufficient information to begin final design. The total cost of the project is shown as $15.2 million. Construction is estimated to start in fiscal year '25, '26 and continue into future years of the CIP in fiscal year '26, '27, and this is reflected in the project budget in that $7 million of construction costs are shown in the future years of the CIP. These schedule and cost estimates will be updated when final design is completed. The project is unfunded in the amount of $3.8 million in fiscal year '25, '26, as this project hasn't yet been included in any recent rate study updates. And I'll pause here to see if there's any questions on this project.
Tony.
Ken, with regard to these upgrades, what upgrades, if any, if any, are required not because of age but because of existing or future anticipated NPDS requirements from the regional board?
Let me see if Lucy can...
In other words, I'm trying to get a handle on what's old and what needs to be replaced versus what do we need to do differently to upgrade in anticipating, in anticipation of permit requirements?
So, the majority of the replacement for Phase One facilities is mostly because they've reached their useful life. There is a component in there for compliance for, and it's mostly in the solids handling area, and it's more Class Bs, Class As and regulatory type stuff, but it isn't, while we're doing the replacement, we will upgrade it for making sure that our, the solids that are being produced are at a higher level, higher level than existing, but still compliant.
In anticipation of our, in anticipation of a, of a future permit requirement from the Regional Water Quality Control Board or...
It's, it's more of a state regulation for solids, the kind of types of solids that are going to be able to be reused instead of landfill.
Okay, but certainly sounds like most of it is with respect to age
Yes.
of the equipment and not with respect to permit.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And, and in consideration is, we're also looking at, if we're doing Phase One replacements, they'll have to be, because, because we're making major investments, that they have to fit with future phases of improvements to the plant.
Right, because you want them to integrate
Exactly.
successfully. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Your Honor, if I may follow up.
Mr. Kilday.
Yeah. Staff, are we looking at a potential, maybe a grant to help defer some of the costs on this?
Yes, of course, we will. So we'll be looking for all opportunities for grants, both state and federal, but of course, we have to have well-defined projects so that we can become competitive in, when we do the applications.
Thank you.
Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades will include rehabilitation or replacement of a large majority of the wastewater treatment plant systems, as they are approaching the end of their useful life and improvements are necessary to address regulatory and long-term requirements. The target timeframe for these replacements will be in about ten years. More information on these replacements will be provided when the wastewater master plan is presented to the CSD later this year, but preliminary information identify the need for this project as well as additional studies and concept design. As with Phase One of the project, Phase Two of the plant upgrades is put into the CIP to start planning and budget forecasting based on preliminary information we have at this time, so potential costs can be included in any future rate studies. Additional studies and concept design are anticipated to begin in fiscal year '21, '22 and take several years to complete with an estimated total of $2 million. These studies will be coordinated with and build upon the information in the wastewater master plan. The design and construction work is estimated currently at $118 million and would take place in future years beyond fiscal year '25, '26 of the CIP with a timeframe of about ten years from now for construction completion. Now, let me pause at this point for questions of this project.
Tony.
You're probably anticipating this, Ken, but same question with respect to Phase Two, particularly since you orally talked about regulatory requirements. So, again, repeating the same question from Phase One, what, what upgrades are required not because of age but because of existing or future NPDS requirements from the regional board?
So in this case, for Phase Two, it's probably half and half. So, we are anticipating that there is going to be regulatory requirements for nitrogen that we definitely will not be able to meet
Okay.
at these levels. We know that there's other exotic type constituents that are not able to be handled for treatment here. We don't know what those numbers are, but we are being required to monitor for those, so we're actually doing some detections and things like that. So we, that, that part of it, this part of the Phase Two construction or repairs, or I shouldn't say repairs, but replacements are with more innovative type technologies that have been proven to remove these more stringent regulatory requirements, both from the regional board for the NPDS, but also water efficiency. So the water efficiency that, that the state has been imposing right now that, that are supposed to be coming online in 2025 and 2030, and maybe in 2040, changes the whole makeup of the wastewater system, and we're required to have different removal levels at each stage of the treatment process, which is not what we're seeing or able to handle at this time.
Right, in other words, it's completely new. It's a completely new approach, right?
Yes, yes. So it's a whole new level, the whole makeup of the wastewater is changing as water efficiency, state water efficiency regulations are being implemented and people are having to use less water but still generate matters, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Sean.
Ken, these are obviously big numbers and long time horizons. Do we estimate, do we make these estimates in today's dollars or when we're looking at projects of this, of things like this, ten years out, do we, do we build in any kind of anticipation for inflation?
Well, at this point, these numbers are really rough anyway, so they're just ballpark numbers at this point.
They're rounded in some sort of fact, right?
They're rounded, they're just estimates, so they're so far out and they're in a master plan level number, so when we get closer, we'll, we'll update the numbers and provide those numbers as we get closer into this, to the process.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right. So lastly, we're going to talk about the MetroLink undercrossing project. On March 10th, staff presented to City Council on the MetroLink undercrossing project, and council approved a professional services agreement for preliminary design. At that time, there was a discussion on the use of city funds to be used in addition to these $6.9 million Losand grant funds. Traffic mitigation fees, or TMF, is the primary funding source for the majority of the city-funded portion as currently shown in the CIP. We're in the process of updating the TMF program, and staff will be coming to City Council in May to present the revised list of projects funded with these TMF funds, which will include this MetroLink undercrossing project. While $5.4 million is shown as the city-funded portion in the draft CIP, staff will continue to pursue additional grant funding to reduce the amount of city funds being used. Now, this table is taken from the MetroLink undercrossing detail page from the draft CIP, and I'm going to use it to talk about some of the project funding. Since the time staff provided the draft CIP to City Council for review, we've reviewed, we've received a comment regarding the city-funded portion of the project. If there are concerns related to the amount of the city-funded portion, one option is to reduce it by $2 million in the draft CIP, so the city, the total city-funded portion would be $3.4 million, which would match what is currently in the adopted CIP. This could be done by reducing the TMF funding by $2 million in year three and showing the $2 million as unfunded. This will affect the construction budget in year three, and staff would need to pursue other funding sources to make up this reduction. The other alternative would be to leave it as is in the draft CIP while staff pursues other funding sources. Either way, staff will not be moving forward past the preliminary design completion and will be returning to council. At this time, I'm going to pause for questions or City Council input.
I don't know if I, thank you, Ken, I don't know if I have a question so much as I have an observation, that is, this is a project that is a Losand project. It is not a MetroLink project, and we've already received, I think, what, $6.9 million in grant funds. Seems to me that the, the, a very, very high proportion of funds that are required for this project, assuming that it went forward, should be received from Losand and should not be city funds. And so, I would, just speaking just as one, one person on this, I would want to see how it is represented in the CIP with whatever the greatest flexibility is to go seek additional grant funding, and I'm talking about from Losand and SB1 funding, and to show it in such a way that the city is, is focused on having this project almost completely financed, not by city funds, but by Losand. It is an important project, as I understand it, for Losand. It's an important project from a transit standpoint, but it's not something, in my view, that the city should, should pay, you know, a large, a very large share of, and this is something that we have to go to at, you know, VCTC and et cetera. So, I guess my view would be whatever would be the greatest way from a flexibility standpoint of showing it in the CIP with the city's intent that it's going to go out and seek grant funding as a precondition to moving forward on this. Hopefully that's clear.
Yes, no, understood. As far as one option over the other, providing more flexibility, I'm not sure if, if there's a real big difference there. As typical is, we seek grant funding for any of our projects wherever possible, regardless of the funding and how the funding is shown in the CIP, right? So, as far as numbers on paper, this approach with showing $2 million unfunded, showing that $2 million unfunded... that $2 million unfunded, I guess you could say highlights the fact that there's a need and upon council direction for additional funding, you know, not, not city funds, and here specifically not TMF funds. With, with the, I do want to clarify with the TMF, as in as Ken mentioned, we're preparing to come back to city council at your next meeting for, to consider the update to the traffic mitigation fee program, which one of the parts of the update is a new listing of projects to be, that are eligible for funding with those developer impact fees. The, the need for funds on this project prompted staff to include this project on that list of improvements, to be, you know, have some funding from TMF, and yet that number, that dollar amount that's within the list of projects to be funded by the, the traffic mitigation fees, that dollar amount isn't necessarily, it doesn't have to be spent to that total dollar amount, right? So even though the TMF is showing $4 million, say, and it doesn't preclude us from obtaining additional grant monies that would then offset the amount of TMF money that would be spent. So, you know, I guess it really comes down to much more a matter of, of the, you know, how, how the numbers are shown and represented. And, and for sure, you know, the, the original Losand grant was based on the estimate of the project at that time for our submittal when that went in and resulted in the six, almost $7 million of Losand, plus about a, we're at about a $900, almost a million-dollar commitment of city funds because of that grant regardless. And now, especially since we've gone through the selection of a design engineer who's, who's reviewed the entire needs of the project for full design, and based on the amount of funding available at this point, we've scaled that back for this conceptual approach, first step with, and going, anyway, going through that process helped us realize that the estimate of this project, the cost, is actually going to be higher. So I think that gives us really good grounds to come back for discussions with VCTC and Losand, saying, you know, essentially is if we would apply for this now, it would be a higher dollar amount of Losand money. So I think regardless of how it's shown in the CIP, we have that opportunity, and, and possibly showing it as unfunded may, may strengthen that position.
I, sorry. Yeah, I would refer, we showed in whatever way strengthens our position with, with respect to that, and I think all of us noticed, you know, just between March 10th and now, the anticipated construction cost went from $9.4 million to $9.65 million. So just since March 10th. So we know that those numbers are, are going to go up. And I guess the other thing is, you know, we, we should acknowledge publicly, because we've received emails from people saying, hey, why can't you just do an at-grade pedestrian crossing for this? Why are you looking at, at an undercrossing? And that has its own safety issues that we have to look at, but the answer isn't the, I'll frame it in the form of a question. Isn't the answer to that, that the Union Pacific Railroad and the California Public Utilities Commission absolutely say, no way, no how, you cannot have an at-grade pedestrian crossing?
That's correct.
Okay. So we really, if, if it's going to get built, it has to be pursuant to an undercrossing. Is that a fair way to think of it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Have we asked and have we actually been told that by both of them?
Yes. Yeah, in conjunction with the VCTC coordination and asking the railroad and the utilities commission.
That's where we started.
Right.
I feel really strongly about this one. So I feel that it should be shown as unfunded. I think that that would strengthen our position when we're looking for grants. And I feel this way, I, I feel that city money shouldn't be going into it. This is not our property. It belongs to VCTC. So I have a problem spending that much city money on something that isn't a city, city isn't going to own. I agree with you.
Okay. I don't want to belabor the point, but I think probably like all of us, we've all had several calls on this. And just kind of shortly here, I agree with what's been said here for the reasons that have been given here. So I agree with what the direction so far has been tonight with you. I think you probably have a pretty good idea of what we'd like you to do. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm hearing is to go with the option of showing $2 million unfunded, which would then match what's in the currently adopted CIP that was approved and adopted last year. So we can make that change, and that would, that would be revised and then be shown in the final document that'll be coming to you for adoption at the same time as the budget.
And I saw five heads nod on that. I saw five heads nod on that. Anything else? Okay.
All right. So are there any other questions on the CIP document overall?
Sean.
Quick question. On page 10 of, of our binder, last item TS 1594, traffic signal improvements at Los Postes and Temple. This has been a topic of some discussion. I see an expenditure of only $2,400 and then nothing else. So are we, are we suggesting that we?
Sorry, what page, what page is that?
Just page 10.
Yeah, the very beginning.
Yeah, very beginning.
And we're waiting for the TMF program to be approved because that's where a lot of the funding is coming from. So until we have that program approved.
We're not funding.
We're not able to begin the project.
Okay, I just, I saw that we had no, we had no placeholder figure for that.
So just to clarify, that table on page 10 is general fund?
Oh, just the funding for general fund, I'm sorry.
General fund only?
Yep.
And then, and then the detail sheet shown there for that project on T28 shows the full funding with the rest of it being the traffic mitigation fee program fund. Another newly added project to the list that'll be coming for, toward, to you for consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question too.
Tony.
Is my mic on okay? All right. Thanks. Ken, could you just, or Dave, could you just clarify for us? Because in the, in the sanitary district materials, we approved the, the community project federal funding requests for specific amounts. And when the, the city's local matching amounts in those respective resolutions that we all adopted, those are inconsistent with the local funding amounts in the CIP. And, and could you just clarify, is that because the, the resolutions request funds that could partially defray the local match?
Correct. That's, that's partly correct, and really how correct is, depends on how much federal funding we do end up getting, if any at all.
Okay.
So, and, and maybe to give a little summary or background on those community project funding requests for the, for the federal funds that were submitted to Congresswoman Brownlee's office for, for potential funding in the future, my discussion with staff and our consultant that's helping us out with that from Washington on how best to structure those requests, including total dollar amount requested and level of city match towards that federal money if we would receive it. So you'd also look at, if you look at the numbers closely, our total request for these federal funds is higher than the total project amounts that we're showing in our CIP at this point. And largely that's because, a couple of reasons. One mainly is that typically with the federal funding, you have a kind of a one-shot chance, except for, you know, a very specific other situations where possibly there may be additional monies available. But we really wanted to ask for as much as would possibly be needed. And then also that then to increase the competitiveness of that ask, to have a significant amount of city match also essentially for leverage, right?
Right.
Will hopefully position those projects in a better light to receive those federal funds.
Okay. All right. Right. Because it certainly makes a difference what the, what the local match amount would be relative to its, how high it can get up of the food chain in terms of being.
Correct.
Approved for, for federal funds.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin.
Yeah. David, Ken, let me see if my math is about right. Are we still with our pavement management program? Are we averaging about $4 million a year on that? Is that, is that somewhat close?
That's correct. We're, we're at the, at this point, $4 million. But we will come back at a later date to bring the pavement management program to council. But that'll be a bit, a bit later. It's not, it's not this year.
Okay. But we, we are moving in the realm of finishing up the existing pavement management program in the next couple of years. We'll be wrapping that up. A lot of it depends on what our bid prices are on each project. You know, there were some years where we could really get a lot of paving done for the dollar. There's some other projects that ended up being a little more expensive and can't pave quite as much. So, but as, we're already in the initial stages of updating the, the pavement condition information that goes into the pavement management program. And it's a pretty extensive database and calculation that, that goes, is a part of that. And as we continue through that, it's good, we're doing that now, obviously, because of the good timing for as we finish up the existing plan, we'll be bringing a plan for discussion and proposed to, to council, including, you know, the cost that it takes to maintain the existing pavement condition index, the, you know, the, the level. And then if, you know, how much less money would, you know, if you cut the cost a little bit, what does that do to the, the pavement condition and how much? So we'll be having those discussions as we develop the update to our pavement management program.
And those streets that are on the pavement management program, they are accessible to pretty much anybody that would like to know when his or her street or roadway is going to be, you know, repaved or improved. Yeah.
Yeah, we have a copy of the pavement management program map with the planned years for the projects, so quite a few of them completed. As I mentioned, we're nearing the end of the, of our seven-year plan. And then those yet to be constructed are shown on that map also. It's on the website. And if, if anybody has a question, they can always call here at City Hall, and CIP staff would be happy to, let them know the best estimate of when that'll be, happen.
Thank you.
Okay, Sean.
Dave, on, I'm jumping around, on the city streets and, sorry, City Street Trees and Sidewalk, Mission Oaks area, I'm looking at specifically page B04. I know the cities, I think we're just about done with this project. A question was posed to me as to who owns the cylinder block wall that affronts those little inlets there, and what happens if a resident suspects that there's damage to the wall because of root intrusion where it may have developed a crack in the wall?
Right. The walls are private. Those, those walls are built when the land is developed and homes are built. So that is, city right-of-way is essentially just on the street side of the wall. The walls are privately owned. And then a good, good example of ongoing process that we have when that comes up, our staff takes a look at the tree and the condition, and if at all possible can tell if it is directly attributed to the tree, where there's an issue going on there, and will handle that accordingly. There are instances where we've removed the tree. There are instances where it's caused damage to the wall. And the typical process there is for the homeowner to file a claim with the city, to go through the claims process and insurance coverage on that. So it's a case-by-case situation.
Okay.
That's handled on an individual basis.
Okay.
We, as part of this project, we didn't analyze any of the cylinder block walls that affront any of those inlets where we replaced trees. Are we, are we, did we?
No, correct. Right. Not on this project.
All right. So that's for homeowners to assess on their own and, and then bring any potential claims or, or causes of concern to the city?
Yep. Yeah, first, you know, and typically what happens, they'll call and they, they talk to our streets division, landscape division, and, and staff does a site assessment and goes through that process. Like I said, there's, there's times when we have resulted in, okay, yeah, this tree does need to be replaced. We typically will plant another tree back, but a more appropriate species for that area.
Okay.
Or if it does end up being more appropriate to go through a claims process, then that's available also.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I will recess the successor agency meeting till we take up the budget later.
Right, I'll recess the sanitary district meeting.
And that brings us up to the next item on the agenda, which is the 4th of July fireworks event. Could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Well, we're not out of the COVID-19 woods yet, but with 58.9% of the Ventura County population having received its first vaccine dose, and 41.3% having received its second dose, and with the direction of the current blueprint tier metrics, we are showing great improvement in Ventura County. Seeing these results beginning to happen, staff began working on a recommendation to the city council for 2021 fireworks display on Sunday, 4th of July, launching at 9:00. However, we do have some challenges. The Adolfo Camarillo High School venue is not available due to the continuing construction. And in fact, it was not available last year as well, but that became a moot point when the pandemic caused the firework show to be canceled. We are not certain what restrictions may exist in July, but current restrictions do exist for events and gatherings, as do guidelines for distancing and use of face coverings. So with that, with that in mind, in order to recommend a firework display to the city council, a couple of issues needed to be resolved. One of them is a launch site that can, that can accommodate a wide fallout zone. And secondly, how will our community be able to enjoy the display under these conditions? And probable, some form of restrictions and safety guidelines in July. Well, thanks to Hege Investments Company, we are able to use our vacant site, which is near the Camarillo Premium Outlets. And this led to the opportunity for the public to be able to use the parking spaces for a park-and-watch display show. Due to the obstruction that the buildings will cause, fireworks will be a high-level launch. So no level, no low-level fireworks will be displayed. And typically, when you're at the, at the stadium at the high school, low levels will be seen by those that are in the stadium or around the, the venue. You will not see, you can't see those low levels from a distance. So these high-level launches will allow residents from areas from, let's say, the northbound side of the 101 freeway to view from their homes and possibly from Old Town because they will be high launch, as well as those neighboring shopping centers like Target Shopping Center or the Los Postes Shopping Center. So with safety first in mind, what is being proposed is a park-and-watch. The city will not provide any activities, entertainment, or concessions that it has done in years past. We're putting a celebratory display for all to enjoy, but unfortunately, we just can't have these types of events. These are open parking lots, so spectators will need to be conscientious and use safe parking practices and be courteous to others, ensuring that they also follow any safety guidelines or protocols that are still in existence by the, and required by the state. We don't know what type of crowds to expect in terms of numbers of vehicles, but we do expect, expect that there will be delays entering and exiting the parking lots, as well as delays out in the streets, exiting the area. Ventura County Sheriff's Department will provide traffic control, patrol the area, and monitor parking lots, and city staff will set up for appropriate road closures. Outlets management will be, will extend security for the retail businesses. And staff has informed and are met with the various agencies, and we will continue to work with them. So as you see the agencies on the, on the PowerPoint, we have made contact with all those agencies. So we're, we're ready to move forward on, upon your direction. We anticipate this year that the cost could be approximately $75,000. Approximately $7,500 will be spent in this current year, and the remaining, if this item is moved forward, then will be appropriated in next year's budget. Being that we're in a larger venue, more intersections that will require traffic control, and that other site prep and cleaning operations will likely add these additional costs. But again, we're still working on those details. We're not quite sure on that number. It seems a little high, and we're hoping to be below that number. So tonight's suggested action is to authorize a city manager to proceed with the 2021 fireworks show and authorize an appropriation of $7,500. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and along with Kathy Telly, Management Assistant, who is leading the planning and coordination of the firework display.
All right, Sean.
Okay. $75,000. I know in years past, we've looked at budgets, I, I looked up 2016, it was like around $25,000 for fireworks contract in 2020. I think we had budgeted like around $50,000. Do we, is there a reason we anticipate the, the cost to increase significantly amongst fireworks vendors? And are we talking, which vendors are we talking to? And are we talking, which vendors are we talking to? Have we communicated to Expo Shows, which I think was one of the previous vendors?
So, we would be going with the vendor. We had a three-year contract with the vendor that we had, well, we had a, we were in the final year of a three-year contract last year. And unfortunately, because of the cancellation, we weren't able to provide, the vendor was not able to provide the show. So, we would be using the same vendor. Now, the $50,000 or the $75,000, that's not all-inclusive for the firework display. That includes other costs, such as, you know, rental of equipment, barricades, security, Ventura County Sheriff's Department overtime, putting in temporary fencing around an open venue for the launch site. So, there's just these costs, and then there's these added costs this year.
And one other thing, in 2016, we had a different vendor. We only had that vendor one year, and that vendor did it in a very unsafe manner, and the city manager closed the whole showdown. So, did the, I guess the fire department closed the showdown.
And yes, and just to clarify that, the vendor cost would be what we, he has traditionally charged in the past.
Any other questions? Mr. Kildee.
Okay. Carmen, I have several questions, and I'm not opposed to this, but I've got some questions. First of all, where are people going to park? Because we can expect a relatively large crowd. Number two, the traffic impacts on Las Postas vis-à-vis very close to the Highway 101, is it anticipated that we might have to divert traffic? Number three, how does it impact the airport as far as the landings and takeoffs for that And number four, are there any outreach for any tenants or any other businesses or churches or anybody else that's a tenant over there that needs to be notified that there potentially could be, I'm just going to say impacts for this?
Yes, Councilmember Kildee. Yeah, yes, we do expect there to be traffic. Again, we don't know the amount of traffic. There's, the parking lots throughout the Camarillo Premium Outlets are 4,000 spaces. We don't expect there to be that many people there, but there will be a large number of people. The outlets will be closed prior to the event. I think that evening, they'll close either at six or eight because it's a holiday, they may stay open until eight o'clock. So, we expect that the shoppers may stay for that next hour and then watch the show and then exit. So, we do expect there to be some delayed traffic, and that's why we're working very closely with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department to provide the traffic control plan and to be able to alleviate that as best as possible. You know, when you go to an event like this, or, you know, you can expect that there's going to be some traffic. So, we'll make sure to notify our community members to expect a delay and be patient. But we are using the Ventura County Sheriff's Department's services to facilitate that traffic. Regarding the takeoffs at the airport, the vendor is experienced with airports, so he will be, as part of the process, we will be filing with the FAA and advise them of the show. They give us a very strict timeline, so when we say we want to start at nine o'clock and that it's for 20 minutes, they give us that timeframe in which we need to do our, provide this service. So, very strict guidelines, but there will be, FAA will take care of that and to ensure that there's no landings or takeoffs during that time. The third item, let's see, I think you asked me about tenant notifications. Yes, we do plan on notifying all the tenants around the area. Now, most of those businesses will be closed, including the retail at the Camarillo Premium Outlets, but the churches and other businesses will be notified. So, clearly, they will, they will get that notification beforehand, but we don't expect those businesses to be open during that time. But we certainly want to let them know that there will be a traffic impact in their area. And I, you might have had a fourth question, but...
I just, one other question, will there be an opportunity for any off-site shuttling there at all? Those that perhaps may not want to fight that amount of traffic to be shuttled in to a certain extent? Or are you pretty well convinced that there'll be enough parking opportunities there so people can basically, I mean, obviously, we want them to kind of watch this through their car, right? We don't really necessarily want them to get out.
That's right. There's not going to be a venue necessarily for them to get out and participate in any activity like in past. We want them to stay within the vicinity of their vehicle, preferably in their vehicle. KBBY, we're working with them to sync music to the show, like in years past. So, hopefully, they'll be listening from their vehicle. We know that not everyone is going to stay within their vehicle, and that's why we're going to really request that the community be conscientious of safety, not only to themselves, but also to others. But there is plenty of parking there, so, and again, these, the fireworks, being that they're a high launch, will be visible from other areas. So, we don't expect that everyone is going to, you know, flood the parking, but we do expect several people to be there for parking. Now, we did consider a shuttle, but again, with not knowing what the restrictions are going to be, we definitely want to be, you know, at least plan for safety and have people just come on, come to the, you know, get closer to the venue or get closer to the parking lot on their own. We prefer that, you know, they say, wait, stay within their vehicle, they stay within their household. Again, there may not be any restrictions in July, but in preparation for that, we would prefer not to do any shuttling service.
And my final question, will the outlets be open or closed at that time of day? Or do we know that?
Yes, so, the management has told us that they, for the Fourth of July, they typically stay open until eight o'clock, but they may still close at six o'clock. That's not been determined by them. But in any case, they will be closed at the latest one hour before the show.
Sean.
I will ask, if we haven't already, the most sensitive site on the west side of town when doing this is going to be the dog shelter, right next to the airport? So, I want to make sure that we reach out and we communicate to them because they have very valid concerns when it comes to barge explosions.
Absolutely. We've already notified the director, she's fully aware of it, and we've let her know all the information that we know so far. We did let her know that as additional details are developed, we would advise her of that. So, she's aware of it, she hasn't, has not expressed any concerns, but yes, absolutely. You know, there's always concerns about the animals being scared or, you know, just have anxiety, but she's fully aware of it, so she'll prepare for that.
Okay, do we have public comments on this item? No public comments on this item. I'll ask, is there a member of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item before we take action? Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Your Honor?
Kevin.
I'll start it off. I think there's a pent-up demand for this. I'm thrilled that staff was able to identify another opportunity. There will be some challenges with this, like there are in any of them. And I'm, you know, convinced that staff will work with the prospective folks that may be impacted with this. But I think this would be, is a really great, through the years, it's been a really outstanding community event. So, I'm very much in favor of going forward with this. And I appreciate, Carmen, if you could pass on, I know there's been a lot of input, there's been a lot of effort in trying to identify a site here. And if you could pass on those that have helped you, yourself, and the staff members and the member of public with this, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Sure, I think Mr. Moshe had a comment.
Mr. Moshe.
Just a quick comment, no, I fully support it, and I'll be happy to second a motion if Kevin wants to make it. I do want to applaud staff. I know that the effort you guys and gals put into all of this, I do want to appreciate, I appreciate Hiji Investments too, because they didn't have to make their land available to this, but they obviously saw and they understand the community desire for this. So, I know there was, there was some movement in mountains, and there's a lot of legwork that was, had to be completed, and I really appreciate staff taking that initiative and getting that done, so.
So, with that, I'll make the move, the suggested action, which I believe is the 2001 fireworks show, the appropriation of 7,500, but that's what the extra that we need to make this go forward to, is that right? Yeah, okay. That's my motion.
And I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further comments? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. I just want to add that the Hiji family has always been very generous in Camarillo. And I appreciate, too, their allowing us to use their land for this. And I also appreciate the outlet centers opening up their parking lots to 4,000 cars. And I'm sure that other places in town will have a lot of cars coming to them as well. Okay, next is new business oral communication information items which do not require action. City manager.
Mayor, I do not have any comments at this time.
City attorney.
I have no items.
Councilmembers, Susan.
Okay, for meetings attended, April 21st CPA Executive Committee, April 22nd Citizen Appointment Committee, April 27th Investment Finance Committee, and that's it. And I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Moshe.
Oh, meetings attended, April 15th Economic Development Collaborative, a quick report on that. At the end of the meeting, we did a little roundtable of all the, all the board members and the different facets of business industry in which they support or represent. And I'm not going to try to get into the weeds, but obviously, the ports, people have heard about supply disruptions and whatnot. The ports are backed up, not necessarily Port O'Wanimi, but other ports like Long Beach and other ones throughout the nation and the world for that matter. Obviously, we heard about the Suez Canal debacle. But there is a significant issue and backup at the ports that are disrupting free trade around the globe. There is a shortage of shipping containers. So, oftentimes, the shipping, either, you know, people who need to put stuff in the shipping containers can't get them. And if you can't do that, then you can't get your stuff on a boat. So, they anticipate, best guess is that by August, things will start to settle. They're, everyone's learning how to, you know, ship goods in a kind of a new environment and climate. So, they are hoping that by August, things will settle down at the ports. This, many employers throughout Ventura County are on that board, they have reported issues in hiring, and that kind of mirrors what we're hearing nationally as well, is that the economy is, right now, is just, is moving. There's, even in light of COVID, there are several industries that are booming and are coming back to life. They're looking to hire, and they cannot find, if not qualified candidates, they can't find candidates, period. And to where they, to the extent in which they do find candidates, they're having very difficulty retaining them. And that people are either not showing up to interviews, showing up, not showing up to the first day of work, or showing up to the first day of work and not showing up to the second day of work. You know, there's a lot of hypothesis, there's a lot of theories as to why that is. Some of it, they think it has to do with unemployment insurance, and that people have to show that they're, they're making a good faith effort to try to find employment, but they're choosing to stay unemployed and take the benefits. I see that personally for myself, too. For our business, we're in construction, it is near impossible to find anyone. We've had four different job applications for different, four different positions open. I got three applications, or four applications, one of which actually had a little bit of work experience, but it's from the valley, and the other three have no experience whatsoever in our field. So, it is, it is very, very difficult to define, retain qualified people right now. And that's probably, that's no different for us here in Ventura County than it is across the, across the country. April 22nd Citizen Appointment Committee, April 28th today, attended AWA Cyber Security Infrastructure Attack Prevention, which is really eye-opening, both the Department of Homeland Security and the FBI gave presentations in regards to trying to prevent attacks on one's infrastructure, whether primarily water infrastructure, obviously, that was kind of the key topic there. That made me, obviously, we've seen some things in the news, it made my mind start going, and knowing that we hadn't really talked thoroughly or asked really a lot of questions in regards to our Disalter project, you know, which is about to come online. And right after note this, I have a few questions for you, Dave, in that, in that thread. But it's really eye-opening as to how, sometimes how easy it is to, to hack into one's infrastructure. So, it's sometimes it's as careless as someone displaying, leaving their password on their computer on a post-it note and publishing that photo online, and/or taking photos and just showing on, you know, displaying online what kind of equipment you have. Because then, once someone knows what kind of equipment you have that you use for protection, then, you know, they can go find exploits online, and then they can start testing those exploits against your infrastructure. And so, it's really important that, in this day and age, especially this day and age, and it's not going away, it's only going to become worse, that we make sure as a city, especially as we have a large project coming online, that we clue into that and we know that we're, we're taking the necessary precautions to make sure. And oftentimes, it's not nation-states we're really afraid of. Oftentimes, it's just, honestly, it's kids, script kiddies, people sitting in front of their computer, and they're just looking for a good, fun challenge. And they start teaching themselves how to, how to penetrate networks and stuff. So, you know, we're not, it's not necessarily the Russians we have to be worried about, but it might be the kid next door, you know. To then, and I was wondering, Dave, and this is, there's a few comments, what, have we had any discussions in regards to whether it's design consultants or our contractor who will be operating our facility in terms of security precautions and how we can guard against any kind of unwanted intrusions?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. It's actually a part of the, even through the RFP Process and Selection, requirement to submit a proposed approach and methodology for all security, both physical site security and then definitely cybersecurity. So, one of the, and our contract operator Infomark is working right now on putting those plans together. There's actually a requirement to submit a security plan, and the cybersecurity element of that is included. So, they are working on that, and they've, one of the reasons we recommended and have gone with Infomark is they've, are operating quite a few different plants around the country and so have quite a depth of experience on the most effective method for that protection. And like you said, the industry, utility industry is acutely aware of the need, you know, to put protections in place to the maximum extent allowable. So, definitely, it's a part of our contract for them to implement that, a high level of cybersecurity. And then also, as far as any liability and indemnification of the city and even insurance coverage, there's cybersecurity insurance coverage, that the operator would be liable for anything that has, is based on a fault of their operations. And so, that's, I feel we're very well set up to be covered and protected. Of course, never, never to let our guard down, just have to continually be vigilant on that. And I will add also, just as far as our other utilities, our existing water system and sanitary system, we also have the measures in place. That's a little bit different because it's not quite as advanced technology. With our future upgrades coming in 10 years, there will probably be more of that. But right now, there is nothing that is automatically controlled that somebody could hack into and make a change. Our system is monitored base, a monitor base with alarms included, then that takes actual physical staff presence to make any changes, as you may be referencing. I think it was in Florida, there was an instance where a large amount of chemical was introduced into a process. There were some specific, we've looked into that and have found there are some specific unique situations with that case that caused it to be as major as it was. So, we're protected from that type of thing right now at our current water and sanitary facilities also.
Okay. Thank you. And if you all will just indulge me one last thing, I had a request.
Okay, we got 20 minutes and three people to talk yet, and we want a break.
I'm going to be quick, it's just, it's a, it's a quick ask. And that's that we refer an item for discussion to Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee so that we, we can look at, I want to look at building codes, particularly as it pertains to new construction. to new construction homes, apartment buildings, condominiums, office parks, as it relates to, as it relates to electric vehicle supply requirements or equipment. There are different levels of that. Obviously, we're quickly, in the last just maybe one or two years, we're quickly advancing, and we're seeing it, obviously, out in the public and whatnot, and adoption of new technologies, vehicles, whatnot, that we look at whether we need to change our building codes, update them to make new projects, electric vehicle, ready. There's different levels, you know. One is not doing anything. One is wiring a building to where one's garage, if they wanted to add an outlet, they easily could without a lot of added cost. Studies have shown that by having it what's called EVSE-ready, could, meaning putting an outlet, at least having the infrastructure already there, be less than $1,000, whereas having to wire it after your one's building or home is constructed, or apartment, can race up to maybe $4,000 or $5,000. I think it's most inevitable that electric vehicles, and we're seeing it already, are becoming, going to become more and more prevalent. So I would like to look, at least introduce, introduce a discussion at that committee to look at what our building codes are, look at state building codes, and what's coming down the pike there, and seeing if there's any kind of adjustment that needs to be made. And I'd be looking for a second for that.
Susan.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and that is it.
Okay, Tony.
Meetings attended since April 14th. April 15th, I had a statewide California Association Sanitation Agencies Board meeting. On April 16th, I attended, on behalf of the council, the swearing-in for Dr. Caesar Morales, the new Ventura County Superintendent of Schools. I pinched it for both Charlotte and Sean, and it was a very nice ceremony. April 19th, Policy Committee meeting. April 23, a MetroLink Board of Directors meeting. Today, earlier today, a Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Authority Board meeting, and the mayor is chuckling because she used to have to do that. Just very quick items on MetroLink. We haven't had, we haven't had a VCTC meeting since the last time we met, so no need to report on that. But on MetroLink, among the other things we're looking at, is very specifically the locomotive fleet modernization study, the rail fleet management plan, and last but certainly not least, the recovery plan framework for how MetroLink, like all other public transit agencies, exits the pandemic and what we do in terms of fair recovery, et cetera. So those, that's it for me.
Kevin.
Yeah. Let's say I had a BRSD special meeting, and along with Ms. Antangelo, I attended an Investment and Finance Committee meeting. And there was, I'll be real quick, but it was quite interesting to me that we had a report from Chandler and Associates, and they are predicting, I believe it's a 6.2% GDP growth for this year, which is pretty enormous. I mean, that's, it's been a long time since I can remember having growth of that magnitude here. And, let's see. As far as anything else, that's about it, but I think what was talked about, too, about charging stations, what potentially is on the horizon for our city, I think that would be a tremendous idea to, to have that. And I did have a number, a few calls, and thought Camarillo is very environmentally in tune with what's going on, so that was, that was important. So that's all I have.
Okay, I attended a CASA State Ledge Committee meeting on the 16th, a Policy Committee on the 19th, an RDP Executive Committee on the 22nd, an Airport Ad Hoc Committee meeting on the 22nd, and this afternoon, a Contract Cities Legislative Committee meeting. They brought forth a new bill. I don't know that it's new in Sacramento, but it was brought, just brought to our attention, AB 1401 Freedman. And it would prohibit the city from putting a minimum parking requirement for any, a residential or commercial zone that is within one-half mile of any public transit, and stop. And that might work in LA or San Francisco or someplace, but it might not work for us, where we have bus stops that are in areas where people have a lot of cars. So I think we need to, I just ask if we could check that out. And that's all I have. Oh, we received a request from a Mr. Salvas to read this out in the council meeting, to make it a part of the record. He would like four things: to make outside dining permanent on Long Ventura Boulevard, to reduce the speed by five miles an hour between Carmen and Lewis on Ventura Boulevard, to add a stop sign to every intersection, and to add a permanent stop sign at the crosswalk into the public parking nearest where the farmer's market meets. And so I have now read it. Yes, Mr. Trembley.
Madam Mayor, if it's appropriate, on that AB 1401, if you're asking staff to report back to us, could I ask that they also report back, there are similar provisions in SB 9 and SB 10?
Okay.
The council needs to be aware of.
Yeah, and I don't know, they need to report back to us at a council meeting, but take a look to see if these things comply with our legislative platform.
Thank you.
Okay. It is now 6:46. We're due to start our second session at 7 o'clock. So I will recess this meeting for, until 7 o'clock.
But they're hard?
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. Ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. And the first item is public comments. I have four of the blue cards from members of the public who would like to speak to us. If there are other members of the public who'd like to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda, please fill out a blue card. They're at, I don't know if they're in the foyer. Okay? And I take them in the turn I get them. Each person will have three minutes. There's a clock that you can see here. I can see it on the screen because everything's split with the Plexiglas dividers. And when a yellow light comes on, you will then have one minute to speak. And when the red light comes on, I will stop you. It's not fair to let some people go on and other people respect the time. So the first one I have is from Peter Tyus. You just have to speak without seeing me. Go ahead.
So firstly, I'd like to thank the city for their leadership during the pandemic. That's not to say that the dangers have passed or that the pandemic is behind us, but rather to recognize that we're entering a new phase with its own risks. And research has shown that the 12 months after a disaster are often the hardest for a community and for community organizations, such as Studio Channel Islands, which is I'm talking about today. This recovery phase is when we will learn what the past year has truly cost us as a community. We'll come to terms with the long-term health impacts and the economic impacts, and perhaps for the first time, we'll actually have time to reflect upon the full weight of the events of last year. This community, like every other, has been through a significant trauma, and each of us needs time and space to recover, as well as opportunities to reconnect. The arts have a strong role to play here. The arts express complex emotions. The arts share experiences and ideas, and they build empathy in communities. And further down the line, our creative spaces will offer opportunities to celebrate, to reconnect, and to build shared memories. And it's those shared memories that shape our community. During the pandemic, Studio Channel Islands pivoted to present a stay-home program: virtual tours, artist talks online, and a home studio program of workshops for people to work through their computers at. These programs engaged over 6,000 people in the last year and a bit, and about 1,500 of whom were children in our local communities. A highlight for me in this last year was the There and Back Again Project, which was an exhibition about grief, loss, and recovery, and an exhibition which we seriously reconsidered presenting during the middle of a pandemic. That exhibition turned out to be one of our most popular, and the artist talk received some of the most heartfelt responses that we had from the community. Our audience realized that they were not alone, that help is available, and that others are going through the same thing as they are. And most significantly for us, we realized that our community responded to art as a salve for the conscience and a channel of self-expression and a route through shared grief. The gallery is now open, and the public are coming back in, and we're delighted to see them coming to see us. And we're planning over the coming months to reopen the studios. As we do so, we're going to offer a program called Reconnect and Recover, which is a free-to-participate program of workshops and arts experiences to develop opportunities for people to express themselves and to reconnect. The program will include free-to-take-part-in opportunities for families and individuals, as well as targeted programs. And we're going to be working with the Traumatic Brain Injury Center and with our local veterans. I'd be delighted to come back and talk to you.
Thank you very much. Next is from Bob Dan, I think.
You got that right, Mayor. Thank you. I'm just here real quickly to address the Sterling Hills Golf Course and Mr. Zaruka's desire to eventually build more houses over there. We talked about this a couple of months back, and the city attorney was to look into on behalf of everybody here what happened to the rights to that property. They were supposed to be awarded to the city. And I was just following up if there's been any action on that. And then, secondly, I just want to remind everybody, Mr. Zaruka continues to try to separate his businesses over there. One is his banquet business, and the other one is the golf course. Anybody knows, you can't have a golf course without a banquet business these days. Banquet businesses are more profitable, 50% profit in banquet business. Probably pre-COVID generating $1.5 million of revenue to him. So to separate those businesses on his books is fine, but as a collective group, we always need to keep that as one. He tried at one time to actually physically separate the address there, and the city wouldn't let him. So I think it was his intention all along to have a banquet business and say he's not making any money on the golf course. But most importantly, I'd like to follow up on the commitment made to follow up on the development rights that we all talked about at that one meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Hirschbach?
I'm Robert Hirschbach. I spoke to you a couple of months ago about the development rights at Sterling Hills Golf Course.
Could you speak right into that microphone, please?
Is that better?
Yes, thanks.
And I wanted to elaborate a little bit on what Bob Dan said. Basically, he said what I was going to say. What I would like to elaborate on is some of the special conditions in the CUP 150 that I don't think the city has addressed. The promises that were made in the CUP 150, 168, 197, 198, and 165, and 145, these special conditions. I would like to know if anybody in the planning department in the city has looked into those to find out why that wasn't incorporated, those requirements weren't incorporated into the CUP 150, specifically development rights and also deed restrictions? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next comment is from Lorena.
Good evening. My name is Lorena Zerwotary, and I just wanted to say that I do appreciate the fact that you had opened City Council for people to come in person. I am sad that my fellow residents of Camarillo are not here. I want to take especially Mrs. Charlotte.
Craven?
Yes, from the great, amazing work that she did back in the summer, you know, alerting us about the BLM. The BLM is not an issue of, let's say, you know, Black Lives Matter. You know, we all matter. But the issue is the people's heart. And no matter what you do, you're not going to change people's hearts. So no matter how many policies you bring in, it's not going to change. And the other reason I am here is because, like, I see everyone around here who are keeping a six-foot distance, social distance. I brought with me the California Department of Public Health, where it says that people, there are some people in here that they don't need to wear a mask, like, two years old. I walk around Camarillo in the park and hiking, and somehow, we've been pushing this from the board supervisors. And little kids are going to suffocate. They need oxygen to grow. And I brought that for you, so you know what I'm talking about. You can read it. I also brought with me copies of the Constitution. Because no matter what happens, you know, the Constitution never gets put on hold. And we have done that. And we wouldn't be, I mean, you did great, you know. There was a lot of people that wrote letters to City Council for the BLM. You know, I was involved with that. I also, you know, make comments because of the shutdown. But, you know, they told us it was two weeks, all right? And then, now is, what, 14 months so far? And actually, if there was really a very bad virus, we will be dropping dead right now. I am a person who have two COVID morbidities, and I have been going around and enjoying the sunshine, hiking, doing a lot of things, and being around people. If that will be the case, you know, we'll be dead. And we have killed, you know, the businesses in our community, the businesses in our county, because we listen to what the board supervisor says. And I ask you that, please, you look into that, because there is a point where we have to say enough is enough. You know, when Hitler's time, you know, you asked the Nazis, you know, the soldiers, you know, I was told to do this, but then we also have to use, you know, our thinking skill. Is this good? It's not. You know, there's children in the schools.
Thank you very much.
Wearing masks.
The next speaker is Kevin Daly. She will distribute those to us.
Fellow council members, there is a so-called pandemic, but the number of reported heart attacks, strokes, and flu is down 97%. I'm really concerned across the country. They say that 100,000 restaurants will never reopen again because of the restrictions that are put on local businesses. And that's really concerning to me, all the business people in this local community that are being affected by the rules of the City Council and the County of Ventura. The COVID virus, COVID-19 virus, has not been isolated. And I'm just really concerned about the state of finances of this community because of these shutdowns and how it's affecting this city and other cities in the area. We know that the increase of suicides is up. We know the increased rate of depression and domestic violence is up. I truly believe that these shutdowns have more drastic impact on this community and other communities than does the COVID virus itself. It is time for these businesses to be opened in this community. It's time for the restrictions to be removed immediately. I don't know what is so magical about this June 15th number that I hear coming out of Newsom's office in the state of California. Can any of you tell me what is so special about June 15? Is that the special time that the Democrat agenda has been fully put through? Is that why June 15th is such a magical number? I implore you, as a City Council members, to seriously look at the damage that you are doing to businesses economically in this community by keeping things locked down. I implore you to open up and remove your masks and get rid of this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to our one discussion item, the fiscal year 2021 third quarter budget report. But before we do that, I need to close the successor agency meeting. And I believe Mr.?
And we need to reopen the Camarillo Sanitary District Board meeting, reconvene.
Very good. So we're ready for the staff report.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Are the rules in here that we are all supposed to be wearing masks?
I'll look at the city manager for that one.
So I heard your comments, and I appreciate them, but I think that you should be wearing masks as is... No, you're not. I just would feel safer for everybody here if you wore your masks.
Proceed. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and the sanitary district board. I'm Mark Yarby, the finance director for the city, and I wanted to give a third quarter update on the city's budget. City's budget is a planning document. It's set for the fiscal year. It's based on a series of estimates and assumptions. And it changes throughout the year as conditions change. And we monitor the budget all throughout the year. But this third quarter review is a formal opportunity for us to sit and present what we've been looking at as we go through, complete the first quarter, the third quarter, I'm sorry. That's July 1st through March 31st. So nine months of the fiscal year completed. And to be real quick, the overall bottom line is positive. We've talked about the entire year and as we developed this year's budget about the pandemic, budgeting during a pandemic and the revenue losses that we've dealt with. We're going to talk about some revenue and expenditure third quarter trends and then recommended adjustments. We have only two recommended adjustments, and I'll get to those in a second. So talking about the pandemic, much of what we've dealt with this year and in our budgeting is based on the path of the pandemic. We started off last year in March and April, total economic shutdown. And that was when we developed and put the budget together. And then in May and June, we had a limited reopening. In July through September, the first quarter of this fiscal year, we started to see some phased reopenings and a fairly steep recovery from the bottom. But then, second quarter, October through December, we saw the surge in cases. So that economic recovery very much stalled until now we're looking at January through March, this most recent quarter, an increasing rate of vaccinations. And that's really the story of this pandemic now, where the recovery is starting to come back to the levels that we anticipated. This graph just shows the path, the number of vaccinations, the growth. And I believe this starts in December and takes you all the way up through the end of March. So you can see the rollout of vaccinations has been huge, and it's had a dramatic impact on the number of cases. In February, a couple of numbers there, 1.7 shots per day. And then in April, it went up to 2.3 million shots per day. And as you've heard a couple of times throughout the evening, that economic conditions are improving. The county upgraded to the red tier, that's the color tier of restrictions, upgraded to the red tier on March 17th, and then to the orange tier on April 7th. And then the move to the yellow tier, which is the least restrictive tier, is anticipated for next week, May 5th, and a potential full opening on June 15th. So again, the economic forecasts are positive. When we're talking about the current year's budget, I'll talk about a couple of our major revenues: property tax and sales tax, the two by far largest revenue sources to the general fund. Property tax really had very little impact from the pandemic. That's because the assessed values had already been established at the county assessor prior to the onset in March of last year. So with the property value set, the taxes were already set in place for this current year, and we have no adjustment proposed. On the sales tax side, that was significantly impacted in the retail and restaurant sectors primarily because of the shutdown. The fourth quarter revenue, which is the fourth quarter of the calendar year, that's the quarter end of December, the biggest sales tax calendar for most cities because that's the holiday quarter. For the fourth quarter, that revenue decreased by 9.7% compared to the same quarter last year. That was a pre-COVID quarter last year. But as part of the budget, when I say it's a planning document, we had planned for those losses. So what we put into the current year budget was a decrease of 11.7% from pre-pandemic levels. So we still feel that, based on the budget we have, even with that 9.7% decrease on the fourth quarter, that we're still going to meet our budget target for the fiscal year. So no adjustment is proposed. Transient occupancy tax is another of our large revenues that was severely impacted by the pandemic for the same reasons. The year-to-date average occupancy for our hotels was 61% compared to 75.8% over the same period last year. same period last year. That's the year-to-date, that's the first nine months of the year, July through March. The key is that second bullet point. The average occupancy for just the month of March was 70%, and that's compared to 51% in the prior year at the start of the pandemic. Another measurement is if we looked at occupancies, average occupancies for the month of March, pre-pandemic levels was about 80%. So we're getting back to those pre-pandemic levels. So again, we had anticipated these types of losses in our transient occupancy tax revenue, so we do not have any adjustment proposed to the budget. We still feel like we're going to hit our budgetary marks. So it wouldn't be a budget presentation without some numbers to look at. So there you go. General fund revenues, as I talked about, you can see the big ones, property tax, sales tax, franchise fees I didn't touch on, because those are pretty static. They were not affected by the pandemic. Those are gas, electric, cable, and trash franchise. Transient occupancy taxes there is the fourth largest. That last column there, the percent realized, is the measurement we use to compare year over year, because even though the revenues went down, that percentage is the percent of budget. So we knew revenues were going to come down as compared to prior year, but we also reduced our budget as compared to prior year. So by looking at the current year-to-date or the quarter-to-date through the month of March, we compare the revenue received as of March 31st to our budget, and that's the percent realized, that last column. So 61% for property tax, 62.9% for sales tax. That kind of measurement is helpful when we compare it to the prior year at the same time, and all of these numbers are very consistent with the prior year, same measurements, except for a couple. The building permits there, 92.4%. That last year at this time was 72.3%. And that's because building activity is very volatile. It's up and down. It depends on the activity. In this fiscal year, we've had some pretty strong building activity, surprisingly, during the pandemic. That last one there, charges for services at 35.1%. Last year at this time, that was at 84%. So a big drop there that was not as much anticipated. That's because we received the CARES Act money. Part of that is CARES Act money coming in, but, I'm sorry. Development activity is another factor there, charges for services, the development activity. We budgeted 2.3. We're only showing as of March 800,000, so a 35% through this period of the fiscal year as compared to prior year. Another big factor in that is the SRO sheriff charges that we get reimbursed for from the high schools. That did not happen this year, so we did not receive the revenue. So that's why our revenue is down compared to last year. But at the same time, that is offset because we were not paying for those services. So there's a little bit of an offset on the expenditure side. The other one I'll touch on here, this other revenue, other sources, that 82%, that last year was very similar, and that includes interest income and the CARES Act money. Are there any questions on the revenue side before I move on to expenditures?
Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. With that, we move on to general fund expenditures. Again, this is listed by department. Again, that last column is the percent expended, and again, those numbers are very close to the same level we were at last year when we're looking at how much has been spent for the first nine months of the fiscal year as compared to the total budget for the fiscal year. A couple on this next slide, I'll point out, the cultural arts services, this line here at 59.8%. That one is down a little bit. That's some of the events that did not happen during the year, so that's why it was down this year compared to the previous year. And on the economic development side, we see some pretty big numbers here, 400,000 in prior year, 1.5 million in this current year, and we've spent 1.4 million. That's largely due to the business grant program that was a million dollars. So that was a big expenditure in this current fiscal year. Are there any questions on the expenditure side?
Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Next up, I'm going to talk about the first of the two adjustments that we have for this fiscal year. This is in the water operations. $961,000 is an increase to the budget for purchased water. And what's going on there is we've got two wells, City Wells AMB, that are being rehabilitated right now in preparation for the desalter. They're being optimized to produce as much water as possible so that we can operate the desalter at the highest possible level. So with those two wells being offline for the rehabilitation, we have to, we cannot pump the water, so we have to buy additional purchased water. That was not planned in the budget originally. So that was an increase of $961,000 that's being recommended. The second one is a revenue. That is TDA Article 8 revenue that we received from VCTC, and it's based on their local transportation fund sales tracks that they receive, and then it gets allocated to the different transit agencies. And their sales tax came in better than expected, so we got a larger share in the allocation to the tune of $568,000. So in summary, all of the significant adjustments, those two that I just mentioned, as of March 31st, have been recommended. Again, the general fund has no adjustments. It is operationally balanced, and no further adjustments are recommended. And staff will continue to monitor the economic conditions as they relate to city operations, and then we will be doing a fourth quarter budget review at the time of the fiscal year 2122 budget presentation or proposed budget study session on May 19th. And that concludes the presentation. The suggested action is to approve the fiscal year 2021 third quarter budget report and authorize city manager to make the adjustments to the budget as we've discussed.
Are there any questions, Sean?
Less a financial question, maybe a question better directed at Dave in regards to the pumping. Because we have two wells offline, and I know we have, I think it's an annual pumping out, I don't know if it's an annual pumping allocation, but because we're not pumping that water out of the ground, we're not, you know, we're not filling that allocation, we're having to buy water, once those wells come back online, can we overpump to meet, to make up the difference, or no?
No, no, that's an annual allocation that we are limited by.
Okay.
So it does not carry over.
Okay. That's a bummer.
I agree. I wish we could. From an aquifer standpoint, no, we can't.
However, we aren't having much rain this year, so.
Well, we are not, and we're going to, that's another subject we may be dealing with later this year. Mark, I'm sorry, I do want to go back, though, and I do want to go back. I had a general fund question. So what I'm focused on is on page CC 6A and then CSD 5B8, and it's the, it's the discussion regarding the projected fund balances for the general fund. And I have a question regarding those numbers in relation to, and if you can go to the other page I'm looking at is CC 2E8, big page E8. It's our general fund comparative balance sheet that we get every month? It's that.
Consent calendar.
It's on consent calendar, sorry. And specifically, it's footnote three. It's our GASB 54 resolutions. What it says in the mid-year budget report is that it talks about how we've committed 49.5 million of the general fund balance to various items, and I know, Mark, you're well aware of those. It goes on to say, though, that to date, I better speak into the microphone, sorry, I forgot to do that. To date, the council has authorized the use of $2.4 million in economic development committed funds for business assistance and grant programs resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, leaving 6.0 million in the economic development commitment. But on the balance sheet, under footnote three, the balance sheet indicates that grants and assistance decrease the economic development commitment from 8.4 million to 6.8 million. And I just, I'm having trouble with the consistency in those numbers between the balance sheet versus what's in the budget report. Can you help me understand that? If, or I may be going apples to oranges, but I just want to make sure that I understand this from a consistency standpoint.
Okay, yes, good question. The difference is in the amount that was authorized for the loan program was $1 million.
Right.
So that was removed from this report, showing that it went.
From the mid-year budget report.
In the mid-year budget report, yes.
Okay.
So that's why it was decreased by the million dollars, but in the balance sheet report that you referred to from the consent calendar, that reflects only the portion that we actually paid into that loan program, which was roughly 300,000. So the difference being.
Okay.
About 700,000.
Then I guess my suggestion might be that you consider adding some language to that footnote to make sure that that's reflected, because otherwise, I think we've got a consistency issue on the balance sheet. Okay.
We'll do.
Just a constructive suggestion. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Kevin?
Mark, maybe you can kind of, you know, shed some light on this question about, I'd ask you, but it's kind of a basic question, but how are you going to continue monitoring the economic conditions of the city here? How do you, I mean, we know that sales tax has a lag, but is there other methods that you can do along with staff?
In this current year, the big piece is the pandemic and the different tiers and reopening levels that the state has mandated. Beyond that, we work with consultants. We have a sales tax consultant that reviews all of the data that comes in from the state on a quarterly basis, so we can monitor how well the revenues are coming in. We have a property tax consultant that assists us with looking at, breaking down the different assessed values, looking at any new properties that are coming online, and helping us estimate what kind of property tax revenue would result from that. We also work on the transient occupancy side, the TOT, the hotel tax. We work with the tourism boards to see what their information is telling them as far as occupancies, not just in the city but countywide, and also any projections moving forward into the next year. And we'll talk more about that on the 19th when we look at the budget for next year. But those are some examples of different areas that we look at.
Okay, and obviously, you'll continue to monitor this. I know that it's changing somewhat rapidly, which is probably a good thing, and so you'll keep monitoring that and getting back to us with any new information that you're aware of.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, no other questions? Comments or what are the wishes of the council?
I'll second the motion.
The motion and a second. To approve the fiscal year 2021 third quarter budget report and authorize the city manager to adjust the fiscal year 2021 budget and make the necessary appropriations. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Do you need to close the council meeting?
The action is also on the sanitary district agenda.
Need to take the same vote.
Do you want, okay, then.
I will move this.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Then may I hear a motion?
I'll move the suggested action for the CAMSAM district.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. You can tell I'm rusty. We haven't been here in a while. May I please have you vote? All right, and that's approved on a five to zero vote. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting of the board of directors of the Camarillo Sanitary District.
And there being no further business, we will adjourn the meeting of the Camarillo City Council.